At present we give to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
At this time we need to approve the agenda. Your recommendation?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the agenda.
I have a recommendation to approve the agenda. Do I have this in motion for word? Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, ayes have it, the motion passed. Superintendent's report.
So several items this afternoon for superintendent's report. First of all, I have an early graduation request. I'll ask the board to consider an executive session. One announcement, today is our first for the Southern County Schools, our first live stream broadcast of our board meeting, which is being shown right now on our soudaucanischools.org website, and it will be archived, so if someone wants to go back and look at the board meeting, they'll be able to do that. And so, I want to commend our board members for that big step, and then I think this adds obviously to transparency of the business taking place at each of our board meetings, and it keeps the public informed and lets them see a lot of the good news stories and things that we have going on in the Southern County Schools. So, I want to commend our school board members for taking that step in the positive direction. Got a few pictures here today that I want to thank. We have got, we had a good first day back for the second semester. The last couple of days have been very busy getting ready for the second semester because of the cold weather. With us going back into session, a lot of things hadn't fallen into place, first day of productive school day. And Mr. Jerry White is in attendance. Mr. White, you've got some of your guys, some of your team here with you today. Mr. White and his group not only worked hard over the holidays, they've got 14 projects completed over the Christmas holidays, but they have been working unbelievable hours over the last three days to get our school system ready for the first day back of the students, because anytime you get into the situation of these kind of conditions, especially in their older facilities, we've got, you know, 25% of our facilities in Southern County Schools are over 4 years old, and so they've been working very hard. Mr. White, if you'll stand up, if you'll introduce your team members who were able to come with you today, because I know some of them are out working still, but we were able to get these here for just a couple minutes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Austin. On the end down here, Sam Hall, if you would stand up. Hey, Sam is assistant director, he kind of quarterbacks and tells us all where we need to be working. Had that picture there. John Hodges here, he's a supervisor, he's wearing two hats, he's a supervisor and also an area manager. We've got Danny Francis, area manager, Gerald Pochet, area manager, and Jerry Booth, area manager, and these are the guys that tote the load for us in the plant maintenance area.
We appreciate it. And we've got another group that I want to introduce that's here with us, Mr. Levi Williams, our transportation director. If you could please stand, I know you've got two of your hard workers here with you, and if you could please introduce them to us.
Yes, sir, Mr. Austin. We have, Ms. Reeve Elliott, who is our service manager here, and we have Ms. Kathy Watkins, she's our assistant director, and I'm just going to let you know that we are very, I am very pleased to be working with these fine people right here, because without them it'd be very difficult for us to run those buses.
We appreciate all of y'all. Before you head out, I do want to tell everybody what the last two days, they've been checking every bus to make sure that it was up and running for today, because that's something we were very concerned about with the cold weather, and so, and I know you've got a lot more team members, just like Mr. White, that couldn't be here, because first of all, they're still out there at the schools making sure everything's good, and they're running bus routes and getting everything ready, and I know all of you have to, all of y'all have to leave, so we appreciate y'all and thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
And also, you know, not only today, you know, the cold conditions, but any of our cold days or rainy days, we've got teachers and teacher assistants across in guard, and police officers who are out there in those conditions, and obviously it's a team effort we want to be able to get this done, so we want to thank all those who went the extra mile to make sure we were productive school day to day. At each of our school board meetings, we have a teacher spotlight segment, because we want to make sure as a, as a school board, that we're able to spotlight what's going on at our schools and in the classroom, and at this school board meeting, our school that's in the spotlight is Shadow Oaks Elementary School. Now I want to ask our principal, Ms. Michelle Smith, please go forward, introduce the program this afternoon.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be with you this morning, this afternoon. I have two people I'd like for you to meet that are the presenters, well seasoned, more than 30 years experience, 21 at Shadow Oaks Elementary, Mrs. Tina Dearborn, and her energetic and eager sidekick, Ms. Amber Weber.
Thank you for inviting us to talk about Shadow Oaks. As I'm sitting there, getting a little anxious, I just keep going, just pick somebody that you know and recognize, and Ms. Riley is somebody that I've seen for all 21 years.
That makes us seasoned.
That's right. And you know, the weather, I'm originally from Maine, and the weather that is present is even much warmer than what they're getting in Maine, and so I was on duty this morning, but that's another story. We are going to talk about our school, which is, Shadow Oaks is such a special school. It's located in a neighborhood. We have this tiny little neighborhood in Horn Lake, I know we have Horn Lake Elementary also, but Shadow Oaks is a school that's been around for a long time. We did add Park Square School, we have new kindergarten, we have a section of the cafeteria, but it still is that neighborhood school, the neighborhood field. Our community is a special community, we have very hardworking parents, a lot of children don't have some of the material needs that other children may have, but these children are intelligent, they have potential, and they need to make sure that we're paying attention and making every moment count. In the next few pictures, you're going to see a few of our staff on morning duty. This was not this morning, though. This morning duty time, over the years, I've done morning duty, I've had to do morning duty, we're back to doing morning duty, and as a teacher, you know, we grumble about it, because I have too many things to do in the classroom, I don't have time to go open doors and things like that, but what we're finding is that myself, as well as others, this is our time to say, you know what, we're that first base of the school, we want those kids to know we're happy they're there, we want them to have a good morning, we want to be able to enjoy it. And so, I found, when I was on duty this morning, and as I opened those car doors, that Mrs. Dearborn comes out and they hug you, and they're so happy to see you, the children in your current classroom, the children in your past classrooms, I've been there 21 years, I have a lot of children that I have taught, I get other children, I haven't had any of those children's children yet, but I do know of some that are coming up. Greeting them as they enter the building, moving down the hallway, all of those things really show them that we care, we want to make sure that we say, stop what you're doing, pay attention to the children, this is the time that counts for them. In the next few slides, you're going to show us as classroom teachers meeting the children at the door. Another time, I've got 100 things to do, get ready to go before those kids walk in, I have to force myself, put it down, go to the door, meet those children, one by one. And Amber and I were talking as we were coming today and saying, that's the time we get, guess what, I got new glasses, have you seen my new boots, Mom's birthday is today, you know, we're hearing all those individual things, and they want to hear us say something specifically to them. I heard what you said, tell Mom I said happy birthday, your glasses look wonderful, and they get that chance to be able to know again how important they are in our classroom, and it's not just about academics. The next slide is just me with one student sits is something we do, it's our systematic phonics program that we're doing this year, first year we've done it, everyone in our building does sit from 8:00 to 8:30. So that was a stage photo, because during 8:00 to 8:30, we're all busy, nobody's going around taking photos, we have everybody included, it didn't matter whether you're a PE teacher, anybody that's available is helping with our sits program. Again, that's always tough, because it's like, I want my kids, I want to be able to control my environment, know who these kids are, what their families are, and when we allow ourselves to just open up and again, say, you know, these are the kids that I have, and then I go back to that morning duty, I see more of my sits kids coming out of those classrooms than it happens to be this year with my homeroom kids, and they're the ones that are, Mrs. Dearborn, do I need to go back to your room? Because we switch our sits classrooms. So, we get to meet a lot of students from the other classrooms, it really makes us feel more like a family, when you're walking down the hallway, it's not just your children that notice you and are waving and smiling and seeing you when they either are going into cars or going out of cars or buses. The next few slides are students and teachers working as individuals. Every one of us as teachers, as we go through new assessments and everything else, we're finding we have to do so much individualization with these children, but again, this is another time to say, before they sit down, you start hitting them with everything that you need to know from them, it's that time to just take a deep breath, how'd you date them? Is your brother feeling better? He said Mom's birthday was last week, did you do something? A moment or two, to again show these kids, I heard what you said, I saw you earlier, I saw you later, this is important to me, that you are here, and before I ask you to be assessed, I want you to know we care about you as a person, and the assessment is something that we have to take down. So, looking at that as an opportunity to check in on those students on a personal level, gauge how they're feeling about themselves, how they're feeling about school, all of those things. Morning duty, classroom reading, sits, individualized instruction are a few of them, multiple opportunities under instruction, to know more about our Shadow Oaks students. Our goal at Shadow Oaks is to keep all our students' best interests in mind at all times, and as we put on the last slide, we continue to look for opportunities, there are so many. To make every moment count, these students deserve to know that they are important. Thanks for letting me share about Shadow Oaks.
Great presentation, we appreciate all of y'all's hard work at Shadow Oaks. Ms. Smith, we appreciate all that you're doing in your leadership board, you've been an excellent job. Thank you, please, please thank the teachers at Shadow Oaks for all of their contributions. At this time, I want to recognize our schools, our high schools for the AP Honor Roll Award. This is something that I shared with the board a few weeks ago, at our December board meeting, there's more accountability than ever with our AP classes now, it's part of the accountability model, and indeed, it's putting increased emphasis on how well students perform on the AP test. Souda County Schools was the only school district in Mississippi that was recognized for this national award for the AP Honor Roll. There are 447 school districts in the United States and Canada, once again, Souda County Schools is the only one in the state of Mississippi, and our schools were recognized, all the high school principals traveled down to Jackson on Beeson the 14th, our school district was recognized at the state's school board meeting by Dr. Perry Wright, the state superintendent. But, as we talked about December, I know our board members wanted to meet the teachers, they wanted to see the principals and be able to congratulate them, so I've invited our teachers and our principals to come down here this afternoon. Not all of them were able to make it, we have, the majority of them are here, but we had some, especially with our late schools, that might have actually been teaching AP class this afternoon, but they're still in school right now, so not all of them are here, but we do have a large number of our AP teachers who are in attendance. What I'm going to do is, is I'll come down to the floor and I'll introduce the principal of the school, and then I'll ask the principal to come up with the teacher, the teachers can come up with the principal, principal, if you'll introduce your teachers and what subject they teach, and then we'll get a picture of each principal and her teachers together. So, Centennial High School, Mr. Payne, your teachers will come forward this time, I'll make y'all interview.
Of course, I have Ms. Toni Coleman, teaches AP Governance. I'd like to have Coach Trinason, who teaches AP History.
Souda Central High School, Mr. Cliff Johnson.
Thank y'all for having us tonight. We've got Ms. Amanda Goomins, she teaches AP US History for us, Mrs. Leslie Plazins, AP World History, Ms. Bella Stacks, AP Cal, Ms. Emily Mead, AP Government, Ms. Amy Benson, AP Lit, and Ms. Mary Calley-Rub, AP Law.
Great job, Lynn.
Fernando High School, Mr. Green Case.
I have most of mine here, I have a couple that are out of sync, but I have Melissa Wyatt, Biology, Emily Trapolino, English, Catherine Wright, Art, Karen Batson, Art, and Gasimah, History. Ms. Trapolino and Ms. Wyatt are former students, so, but, to share this with them.
Fort Mike High School, Ms. Randy Orford, principal of the state.
Thank you for having us. It is my pleasure to introduce our AP teachers. I have Mr. Michael Kenny, who does AP Biology, Alan Dupree, who does AP World and AP US History, Ms. Tany Smith, she does five AP Art, I believe, and Ms. Bynne L. Hester, she does AP Calc and AP Physics, and Ms. Dawn Joyner, she does AP Lane and AP Lit.
Lake Cormer High School, Ms. Rhonda Goss.
Thank you for having us. It is my pleasure to introduce our AP teachers. I have Mr. Michael Kenny, who does AP Biology, Alan Dupree, who does AP World and AP US History, Ms. Tany Smith, she does five AP Art, I believe, and Ms. Bynne L. Hester, she does AP Calc and AP Physics, and Ms. Dawn Joyner, she does AP Lane and AP Lit.
Lake Cormer High School, Ms. Rhonda Goss.
Thank you for having us, and I'd like to introduce my teachers at this time, Ms. Sarah Fornin, Ms. Joy Carpenter, she teaches AP Chemistry, Ms. Rebecca Siskay, she teaches AP Lane, Ms. Victor Phillips, she teaches AP Art, oh, AP Life, Ms. Shawna Baker, calculus, Ms. Christina Farrell, World History, and Ms. Robin Aman, AP Lit.
This year we're adding AP Biology, and next year we're adding AP Geo.
Lewisburg High School, Mr. Chris Fleming, and his teachers.
Thank y'all for having us. We do have several that are out, I got a couple that are, my soccer coach, he teaches AP Future Science, so, he's not practicing, but, I'm going to introduce you to the ones that we do have here today. Ms. Tracy Young, she teaches AP Lane, Ms. Christie Wiseman, she teaches AP Lane as well, Ms. Cheryl Lantil, teaches AP Lit, Ms. June Reason, she teaches AP Calculus, and Coach Jeremy Bowler, who teaches AP Government.
Olive Branch High School, Mr. Jacob Stripler.
Happy to be, Mr. St. Joseph, he teaches our AP World History, I have four other phenomenal AP teachers, but on the first day of the new semester, they were teaching, obviously, and just going to leave their classes behind on the first day of the new semester, but thank you for having us, and, you know, the teachers did a great job, they really do, I'm very grateful we accomplished this year so far, and highly, highly deserve recognition for these teachers.
South Haven High School, Principal Mr. Shane Jen, his teacher.
I'll echo what everyone else says, Mr. Austin, it's been a privilege to take the time to allow us to just introduce some of our finest teachers, so it's my privilege to introduce some from South Haven, not all could be here, but the ones that are, on the end is Ms. Sky Rhodes, she does AP World History, Ms. Linda Johnson does AP Senior English, Ms. Julie Patrick does AP Junior and Senior English, Mr. Anthony Henry is the calculus teacher, and here is Mr. Tim Gardner, this one, he does AP Government, AP Economics, AP US History, and AP Psychology.
Anytime we have an opportunity to recognize our, our teachers, we want to do that, and our board wants to always take that opportunity, we have the best teachers you'll find anywhere in America, right here in Souda County Schools, and we're so glad y'all could come today, we know that, you know, it's tough to come in at this time of day, but we do appreciate all of your hard work and the way that you represent Souda County Schools, there's no way that we would be as successful as we are as a school district without the phenomenal job of our teachers and our administrators and our staff members. And also, along those lines, we wouldn't be as successful as we are without our students. Many of those AP scores that were a result of, that helped us be on the AP Honor Roll, that came about because of our, some of our students who are in attendance tonight, too. We have got our superintendent's youth leadership council students here, and when I was a high school principal, I always relied on our student leaders on campus, and these are the student leaders that I rely on as superintendent of education, because these, these students are the ones who are representing each of the campuses around Souda County Schools, and I'm going to let our sponsors, Ms. Ann Goss and Mr. Jeff Shands, tell you a little bit about the program, and I just want to say, first of all, before they do, because I know they'll say the same thing, I want to thank the board for supporting this program and for allowing these students to have this opportunity.
Thank y'all for having us this time tonight. This is a wonderful break of students, and I know y'all are pretty familiar with it, but just to kind of give you an update, the Superintendent's Youth Leadership Council is as privately funded, leadership program through the Souda County Schools, each year it takes about $30,000 to run the program. We're funded this year through the River Queen Space Off Field Trips, Summer Skilton, Charlie McGutty with the Delta Regional Foundation, and Amy Lofton, who has a son this year. The students are all self-nominated and selected through an anonymous application process from members from our community. They start on this council for two years, we typically have two juniors and two standards. This year we have an amazing group of applicants, I think, so that number group, we usually have about 32, about 38 this year, so we're very excited about that. One year the students will study entrepreneurship and take a local business tour, and then the year with a trip to New York, that is this year for our students. The alternating year, the students will study government, politics, and take a trip to Washington DC. We typically meet about twice a month for them to hear from local leaders and study leadership styles. We also partner with the Decider Economic Council and their Leadership Decider Program, we will serve with them on their Leadership Decider Day in March, if they decide, we will give the students an opportunity to make leadership in our community as well. These are outstanding students, as he said, they are typically our class presidents, our national mayor, the laundress directors, and the source of the school, Mary Maral and the owner. But, Mr. Shane, it's an honor just to work with the owner, to be a part of this. We appreciate y'all allowing this to be possible, I know a lot of y'all have helped kind of butt us through the different programs, and every year we're very excited, so we would just like to thank you and our members, to support the program. Mr. Shane.
I'd like to just echo Ms. Goss and say thank you to Mr. Austin and the board for your investment in such an amazing leadership development program, and it's just an honor to be a part of it, and thank you just to any, I think the board works and county office staff, just so many of them work hard helping us put this together, it's just an honor. This time I do want to recognize- Um, the alternating year, the students will study government, politics, and take a trip to Washington DC. Um, we typically meet about twice a month for them to hear from local leaders and study leadership styles. Uh, we also partner with the Soto Economic Council and their Leadership Decider Program. We will serve with them on their Leadership Decider Day in March. They do say we will get the students an opportunity to make leadership, um, in our community as well. Um, these are outstanding students, as he said. They are typically our class presidents, our National Mayor, the laundress directors, and the source of the school, Mary Maralca Deon. Uh, but Mr. Shane, it's an honor just to work with the owner to be a part of this. We appreciate y'all allowing this to be possible. I know a lot of y'all have helped, um, kind of funnel us through the different programs. And every year we're very excited. So, we would, um, just like to thank you and our members, too. We look forward to...
I'd like to just echo Ms. Goss and say thank you to Mr. Ross and the board for your investment in such an amazing leadership development program. And it's just an honor to be a part of it. And, uh, thank you just to any, I think the board works and county office staff, uh, just so many of them work hard helping us put this together. It's just an honor. This time I do want to recognize the students, and I'm just going to turn this around so that people can do that. So, students, if y'all will come back on this side, just kind of line up right down the road, and I'm going to call your names here. Come on up, and we'll do that. Just listen for your name. We won't worry about what order you're supposed to be in. And guys, after you get your certificate, y'all can go sit back down, and then they're going to call us up. Okay? Just stand up. There you go. Just line up across here. All right, from Center Hill High School, we have Morgan Atkins. Also from Center Hill, Madeline Sloan. From Center Hill, we have Kaylee Paulino. And representing Center Hill, we have Randy Terry. From Soto Central High School, Silas Nelson. Alexis Cobbs. Garrett Harple. Catherine Henley. And Anna Grace Robinson. From Hernando High School, we have Emma Kate Jones. Andres Louroto. Caitlin Cartwright. Grace Owens. From Horn Lake High School, we have Kamaya Ingram. Rosa Santana Potts. Madison Burke. And Jackie Van Riddick. From Lake Cormer High School, Cody Bryan. Caitlin Dunn. Isabel Penaglas. From Lewisburg High School, Aggie Dodrich. Jamie Pack. Camille Howell. Caleb Owens. Claire Walden. Gracie Weeks. From Olive Branch High School, Jake Poirot. Alan Bailey Sappel. Brittany Clayber. Autumn Hayes. From South Haven High School, Gavin Faust. Hannah Widderspoon. Rachel Sacchar. Amber Sue. Clayton Truitt. And Bridget Anderson.
All right, if y'all, uh, would like to stay for the board meeting, you're welcome to, for the rest of the board meeting tonight. Now would be a good time to head out. Thank you all for coming.
All right, thank you. I just want to say this really is a nice group of young people. We always hear the bad things. We never do hear the good things about what young people are doing this day and time, but they are super, and we thank you for coming today. Attorney's Report.
Yes, Madam President, I have, uh, three litigation matters and one contract matter to discuss in executive session.
All right, thank you. I need an approval, a motion to approve the minutes for December 7, 2017. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consent Agenda.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the consent agenda.
I have a recommendation to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve consent agenda.
Do I have a second? Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Having none, the ayes have it, the motion passed. New business. Statement of Revenue and Expenses, November the 2017. Ms. Graves.
Um, our general fund revenues received, um, so far through November, uh, just the report for this time, were seventy-three million, three eighty-nine, nine thirty. If you compare that to last year, we are just slightly over last year, was seventy-three, two sixty-three, eight fifteen. Uh, for all funds received, we're eighty-five million, seven fifty-two, eight thirty-eight, which is just slightly below, it's definitely on the top of the table, at eighty-five million, nine oh one, one forty-seven. For our general fund expenditures, um, we are up slightly, but perfectly expected at eight two nine, three fifty-six, nine forty-five. We're about thirty-five percent of our expenditures expected for the year. Uh, all fund expenditures, we're one hundred and five million, two forty-eight, one oh eight. We're up about six point three percent, but that is mainly due to almost four million dollars in construction, those first two, though, that is a one-time, a one-time loan. So, uh, we expect that as well. Um, so we have a great report.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the statement of revenue and expenses for November 2017.
I have a recommendation to approve the statement of revenue and, uh, expenses of November of 2017. Do I have a motion?
A move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, the ayes have it, the motion passed. Uh, Statement of Cash Flow for November 2017. Ms. Graves.
Our district maintenance, uh, cash balance, which is our operating fund, is at seventy-seven million, one twenty-five, seven fifty. Our invested balance at this point is twenty-six million, four forty-six, two sixty. And our overall cash balance for all funds is one oh nine, seven thirty-one, five twenty-six.
Thank you. Your recommendation.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the statement of cash flow for November 2017.
I have a recommendation to approve the statement of cash flow for November 2017. Do I have this in a motion?
A move.
Do I have it a second?
Second.
All, uh, in comments or questions?
Yes. Does our investment...
Pardon? It's not overly, um, heavy on equity or anything that's dollars to market very much. Uh, no matter what, in the end, we will not lose money, but we have still gained.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion passed. All right. Combined Balance Sheet for November 2017. Ms. Graves.
Our general fund balance, uh, at this time is eighty-five million, nine sixty-seven, three thirty-eight. Compared to last year, we're eighty-six million, seven sixty-four, eleven. We are finally to the point where we don't have to adjust for the ten million that we transferred because we played that one-year circle. So, uh, what's on page is what's on page. So, we're very excited, um, and our fund balance is just slightly down. Then our, um, all funds balance is actually up at one hundred and fourteen million, seven twenty-eight, oh ninety-five, as compared to last year, one hundred and ten million, eight oh six, three ten. We did have some proceeds, like some of our renewal and certificate of participation proceeds, we haven't spent yet, but, uh, but on average, we are holding steady to last year, which is better than this time.
Thank you. Your recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the combined balance sheet for November 2017.
I have a recommend- recommendation to approve the, uh, combined balance sheet for, uh, November 2017. Do I have this in a motion? Do I have a second? Do I have any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion passed. New Board Policy, CDA Superintendent Qualifications First Read, Ms. Weeks.
Yes, ma'am. We are presenting this policy for a first read. It is to ensure compliance with House Bill 1116, that was passed in the 2017 legislative session.
New Board Policy, CGD.
Yes, ma'am. We are presenting this policy, um, as a first read. It gives more detail in the administrative hiring practices for the district, and we are presenting it for a first read. It will post it on our website for additional...
All right. New Board Policy, BCAC Special Meetings of the Board, Ms. Weeks.
This, this policy is being presented for a second read. It's to ensure compliance with House Bill 1116, that was passed in the, um, 2017 legislative session. It was posted on our website for comments, and we did not receive any.
Your recommendation, sir?
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the new board policy, BCAC Special Meetings of the Board.
I have a recommendation to approve the new board policy, BCAC Special Meetings of the Board. Do I have this in a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion passed. New Board Policy, BCVA Time and Place of Board Meetings, Ms. Weeks.
Yes, this policy is also being requested to ensure compliance with House Bill 1116. Um, it was posted on our website after the first read, and we did not receive any comments.
Thank you. Your, your recommendation.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the new board policy, BCVA for Time and Place of Board Meetings.
I have a recommendation to approve the new board policy, BCVA Time and Place of Board Meeting. Do I have this in a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the ayes have it, the motion carried. New Board Policy, CEDA County Superintendent Vacancy, Ms. Weeks.
Yes, ma'am. This policy is being presented for a second read. It is to ensure compliance with House Bill 32. It was posted on our website, and we did not receive any comments. And I'd like to note that this policy will be rescinded as of January 1st, 2019.
Thank you. Your recommendation.
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the new board policy, CEDA for County Superintendent Vacancy.
I have a recommendation to approve the new board policy, CEDA County Superintendent Vacancy. Do I have this in a motion?
A move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion passed. Revised Board Policy, IHF Graduation Requirements, Ms. Weeks.
Yes, ma'am. The Ministry Department of Education recently changed the high school graduation requirements for interim freshmen of 2018, 2019. Um, we are requesting a revision to our policy to include, to adopt those changes because our counselors will be in February with scheduling and any suspension of work to be...
Madam President, I recommend the board to approve the revised board policy, IHF Graduation Requirement.
I have a recommendation to approve the, uh, revised board policy...